Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:01 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't see that we have our media students here from the high school, so we'll move on then to have the coordinator call the roll.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Mr. Scravano.
Here.
Mrs. McCullough. Dr. Harner.
Here.
Mr. Connor. Mr. Escobedo.
Here.
With five present, two absent, we have a quorum.
We will now, at this time, recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff, and Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. will make those presentations. Earl.
Good evening and thank you. Whitehead Elementary School teacher Rachel Kayemba was named the WREX TV Teacher of the Week earlier this month. She's in her 10th year teaching at Whitehead, and Principal Pam Minor told WREX that Mrs. Kayemba teaches with a huge heart. She was nominated by the parent of one of her students who told WREX, "You can tell that she cares for the students. You can tell she likes her job." Thank you, Ms. Kayemba, for all that you do for your students in RPS 205. Please join me in congratulating this fabulous teacher. Ms. Kayemba. I would also like to say her principal, Pam Minor, is also here. Pam, hello. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. That is all.
Are we, are you doing the grant thing, or?
No, sir.
No, okay, already, okay. It's on my agenda. Thank you. We are now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting, when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you will be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It is not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators, or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called at one time, the one who's turned it is to speak and the person who will speak next. If you're the second person, please come up to the front row. We also want to point out that we have a clock on the wall to help you with your two minutes, and we thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. Our first speaker tonight is Angela Scardato, to be followed by Allison Wang.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Angie Scardato. I am a parent of a beautiful special needs child who signs for his main mode of communications. For years, we have been told that he falls through the cracks, so to speak, because he is not deaf, so he cannot go to the signing program, and the signing program is not for special ed. So we compromise. Now he is to go to his own school next year that does not fit his needs. There is a school out there that does somewhat fit his needs, but is not in his zone. This school intertwines with the hearing impaired signing program with its special ed program. They sit together, they eat together, they go to field trips together, in an environment that is with peers who communicate the same way he does, which will enhance his experience, helping him grow. With a teacher who is fluent in sign language, where he is able to join this class daily, yet still we hear, "No, no, no," is this school district's opinion that he needs, his needs are, will be met fine elsewhere, with peers and a teacher who are not signing and are not fluent. What about our opinion? Who knows a child better than his parents? We have compromised enough. I am asking for your help. I would like someone here to contact me, meet with me, and work for my child's best interest, not against my child, and not against us. For without your help, this city of Rockford will lose yet another family, because this school district is not responsive to a child's need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scardato. Allison, Allison Wang, to be followed by Amy DiCosola.
Hello, I would just like to point out a few mistakes made in someone's comment from last meeting.
Not sure that's on, Allison.
It's on.
It is, okay. Hold it maybe a little bit closer.
Okay.
Okay.
Contracts going to Stentrum companies did not save taxpayers a million dollars. Quite contrary, as an example, a contract for Welsh School, Stentrum underbid the next company by $5,000 out of $6 million. That is a tiny amount. For Auburn Fieldhouse, Stentrum had a higher overage than other fieldhouses. There were a total of eight contract, uh, change orders, and the administration only provided two change orders for the Board to approve. I don't quite know why the other six were not disclosed to the Board. These six change orders summed up to $389,016. Keep in mind that Stentrum only underbid the next company, Smelling Construction Company, by $134,800. So, the next higher overage actually cost the school district more in the end, by almost a quarter million dollars. So, if you could please clarify what you meant by how it saved taxpayers a million dollars, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. Amy DiCosola, then. Thank you, Amy. I'm sorry, your, your, your two minutes are up. Thank you. Board member comments at this time? Mr. Rollins.
Sure. Um, this isn't going to be a game of ping pong. I, the person who spoke and said that I had said that Stentrum had saved the district a million dollars wasn't listening very carefully. I used as an example on the Auburn Fieldhouse that they had come in a million dollars less than the high bid, as an, as an example of how competitive bidding works. The change orders for the Auburn Fieldhouses were all public knowledge and publicly discussed for people who were paying attention at the time. They came through the Operations Committee. Because they came through the operation, because we wanted them to be public, they came through the Operations Committee, and then we brought them to the Board. The Auburn Fieldhouse had the largest change orders for two reasons. One is because Auburn came in so much lower in the expected bid than we had expected, we actually added some work to Guilford, which we had not done at Auburn, and specifically, we added LED lights to the Guilford Fieldhouse, and we added a terrazzo floor to the Guilford Fieldhouse, which we had not specked out at Auburn. Some of us, including me, felt that if we had the money to do those things at Auburn, at, excuse me, Guilford, we should be doing them at Auburn as well. And so, we asked the administration to go out and do change orders to add the LED lights at Auburn, which they were doing at Guilford, and to do the terrazzo floor at Auburn, which they were doing at Guilford. In both situations, that was unanimously recommended by the Operations Committee. The LED lights, even though they cost more upfront, will save the taxpayers money over the long run in operational costs. The terrazzo floors, even though they cost more upfront, are expected to save the taxpayers more over the long run in maintenance costs. There was one other large change order out at Auburn that had, that had to do with unexpected field conditions. Once they started digging, they ran into field conditions that were not expected, couldn't have been predicted, and that was the other large change order. We can't keep doing this. I have no problem in listening to people who come to us with legitimate problems, legitimate concerns. In this situation, you know, what we've got is somebody who is caught doing something wrong, somebody who is caught actually doing something wrong, who is engaging in the time honored American tradition of trying to point the finger at other people in order to deflect attention away from themselves. And we can't sit here every meeting and play ping pong with these people every time they want to misstate something, every time they want to take one fact out of context. It's just not worth it. So, I am going to try to take the advice of my Iowa son-in-law, who told me not that long ago not to wrestle with pigs, because you get dirty and they like it.
Any other Board member comments at this time? Okay, we will move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items, the meeting minutes of December 8th, and the amended meetings for, amendments from January 12th, 2016, purchase orders, payroll, accounts payable, contracts under 10,000, and construction bid pay request log and travel. And under item number eight, the bid recommendations for Riverdale, Welsh, and Whitehead, the recurring contracts and the IGA addendum for the Rockford Park District for Camp Journey 2016 program, and the other consent items, including the confirmation and approval of the appointment of Chair, and approval of the appointment of the new member to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, the interest transfer for December 2015, the monthly investment report for December 2015, the financial results for year-to-date through December of 2015, the EIA Memorandum of Understanding with the Electronic Timekeeping, and the OPA Memorandum of Understanding for former EOPA members returning to EOPA positions, and the Freedom of Information Law. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Are there any consent items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the consent items, not...
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
Mr. Scravano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough.
Yes.
Dr. Harner.
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo. The motion passes with five yeses, one absent from the vote, and one absent.
We're now at the closed session consent, consent agenda items, including the settlement agreement and release, the request for administrative student transfer, the group health insurance enrollment appeal, and the HR organizational report and addendum, and the closed session consent items, including the student discipline in which expelled or suspended students are privy from being on school grounds and school, school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. The 10-day suspension for JLF4 is affirmed. The expulsion of CMB5 is held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year. The expulsion for CIF10 is held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year and the first semester of next school year. Students EZP-8 and JTM9 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and the entire next school year of 2016-17. TRH11 is expelled for the remainder of this school year and the first semester of next year. And the following students have been granted an expulsion and abeyance agreement, LAC1, CTN2, EJH3, MIOG6, AJMWH12, and JLC13. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of closed session consent items.
Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
Mr. Scravano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough.
Yes.
Dr. Harner.
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson. The motion passes with five yeses, one absent from the vote, and one absent.
Thank you. Move on to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett.
Yes, I'd like to cede my time to Dave Carson to talk a little bit more about some recent recognition the school district received in terms of the designation as the third Forward Next Generation Learning Community, and also our communications team to show a little bit how we are going to display this in our, in our respective high schools that were part of that recognition. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to Dave.
Thank you, Dr. Jarrett, and good evening, Board. So we were designated back in October. We hosted in conjunction with Alignment Rockford, our first Alignment Institute Midwest Region, and were designated as the model community, as Dr. Jarrett alluded to. And so the Forward Next Generation Learning Model is, first and foremost, it's a structure that we followed with our implementation of our academies, a set of essential practices and expectations, and, and you've probably heard me reference over the years, the small learning communities transforming teaching and learning and community engagement, that's the Forward Next Generation Learning Model. It's also a process, a roadmap that they've developed for how you go about implementing this work in our schools, and that's a part of what earned us this recognition, is the, the work that we've done as a community and as a school district to implement our academies and the model that we're establishing for others. And finally, it's a network, so it's an opportunity for us to connect with other school districts, and that's one of the methods through which we got connected with Nashville. And we've recently been connected with other school districts here locally who are also looking to implement the model. And so, it's elevating us to that leadership role, where we're now in the position to give back to the community in education of how we can go about implementing this model to affect others. And so, Jen Thompson is standing back there with a banner which has been developed to signify this model recognition, which will be displayed. All right.
Good evening again. So, again, as Dave kind of talked about, we, we think this, it's, we think this is a big deal. It's a big deal, not only for our school district, but certainly for the Rockford community. So, we're, the first thing we're going to display, Jennifer Thompson, our marketing director, has done a great job with this, so thank you, Jennifer. But this is the design that we're going to show, and you can just, just show the board, you can come a little closer, you can come a little closer, yeah. And these are going to be displayed, and the audience, these are going to be displayed in our high schools, and we're going to allow them to decide where they think they would like to prominently display that. And then, as you can see over here, the banner, which is the similar design, and that's going to be used for presentations by anyone, our administration staff, anyone in our schools who would like to give a presentation. It's here, if you'd like to use the banner. And so, that's, that's there. And lastly, because the Board, because of your leadership, because of your role in this and your support of this, we also have just a small token of our appreciation. And so, we're very proud of this designation, and we're going to shout it from the hilltops, because we, we think that this is something good for our community. So with that, thank you all very much, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
And Mike Connor is not here, so, okay. Thank you. Yeah, very nice, okay. Okay. Thank you very much, and we're very proud of the program, and on to bigger and better things, right? So, Ms. McCullough, you can proceed with the Education Committee report.
Education Committee met in this room on January 19th, and we had two items on our agenda. One was an update on the strategic plan, strategy number five, facilities and technology. And the information we were presented was about the data warehouse contract with Bright Bites, and the practice of analyzing teachers' implementation of technology into their curriculum. Teachers are going to be surveyed, and the data is going to be used to create good examples for better use of technology, and the process will be repeated in two to three months. Part of the process is that after they do the survey, there'll be actionable strategies to improve instructional practices, and then principals will be provided with resources, and teachers will also be provided with resources and strategies to implement, implement those into their instructional practices, the best technological strategies. I'm sorry, I'm kind of off on that. Anyways, they're going to monitor improvement, and then they're going to do it again in survey. So we have this contract with Bright Bites, and I asked the question, I'm thinking, is it a three-year contract, Dr. Weisman? And this is your, do you remember?
I blew, you, you caught me off here. I think it's just actually for one year.
And then, but it's renewable for three.
And then we have an option to renew for three, yes.
So we'll have an update on that before we renew the contract.
Correct.
It was really what I wanted to get at, so that we can have an update on what's happening. The whole idea, obviously, is that technology helps increase our students with their engagement, but the fact that, is that we wanted to support the curriculum. So it's kind of helping, Bright Bites helping us marry the two. The second report that we had was on the strategic plan, strategy number eight, which is to monitor, track, and report. That was about a data warehouse, and, and we're, we're in the process, the district is, in looking for an RFI, a request for information for a data warehouse, basically to bring together all of our technological information from the district. So we won't have silos with finance in one, and we won't have curriculum academics in another, and HR over here, and everything will be brought together. And so, the timeline for that is on the 22nd, January 22nd, which has actually passed, right? The RFI is published, because our meeting was before it was published on the 19th.
Correct. We actually did get some final feedback from one of the Board members, so it's being published this week.
So it has not been published, but it's going to be published this week. Thank you. In February, there'll be site visits, and in March 9th, there'll be a review of proposals and finalize the choices. Things will actually, obviously, come back to the Board. There'll be a lot more conversation. It's a pretty big endeavor and pretty short timeline, and thanks for the input from the Board members. There was a lot of good, good conversation. Some of the, some of the discussion from members of the committee was concerned about it being user-friendly, data being accessible, with the goal to pull the data together. Training was an issue, needs to be part of everything. Backups, access levels, controls, outside, internal controls, external controls, and the goal is to implement a proven solution, one that works for other districts compatible with our own, instead of starting from scratch. At this time, the hardware requirements are unknown. Security measures are to ensure unauthorized parties will not be able to access data, and there were, the idea is to start with a pilot program, smaller, in one classroom, one grade level, one school, for example. And the recommendation was made to include in the, include in the RFI, I don't know if this is part of what, what was updated, what effort it will take the software to understand the data that we collect. The committee will meet again the 3rd, it must be the 16th of February in this room at 5:30. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Rollins, operations?
Operations Committee has not met since the last Board meeting.
We'll move on then to our action items for tonight's meeting. The first item is improving the effectiveness, cost effectiveness, and equity of response to intervention and special education. This was presented by Dr. Weisman. Is there a motion and a second to approve the improving effectiveness, cost effectiveness, and equity to RTI?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins.
Second.
Long, real long thing. Second. Oh, Dr. Harner, did you second that? I didn't hear. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Is there any questions or discussion? Have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of this item, 16A.
Mr. Scravano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough.
Yes.
Dr. Harner.
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson. Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one absent from the vote, and one absent.
Our second action item is the contract for the grant for the arts consulting service that Dr. Wolf presented. It's our motion and a second to approve this contract.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of 16B.
Mrs. McCullough.
Yes.
Dr. Harner.
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson. Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
Mr. Scravano.
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one absent, and one absent from the vote.
Our next item is the approval of the certified speech and language pathologist for E. Miller. Is our motion and a second to approve this?
Yes. Can we do both? Can I?
Yes.
Move to do both at the same time?
Sure, absolutely.
Second.
The, the motion then will be to approve the two certified speech and language pathologists for E. Miller and A. Opperman. Moved by Mr. Moved by Mr. Rollins, seconded by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion? Now, I have the coordinator call the role on the approval of items 16C and D.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one absent, and one absent from the vote.
Our next action item is the recommendation on approval of architect agreement contract for Fair Graham.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion on this item? Mr. Rollins?
Just want to remind everyone that this did come through operations, as did the next item, the health life safety amendments, and was unanimously recommended for approval to the board by the Operations Committee.
Okay. Any other comments? Have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 16E.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one absent, and one absent from the vote.
Our final action item for tonight is 16F, the health life safety amendments presented by Mr. Schmidt.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins, seconded by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion? Have the coordinator then call the role.
Ms. Jackson?
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one absent, and one absent from the vote.
Thank you. We're now on to new business, and Mr. McConaughey will present our next two items.
Thank you. These two items are related. I would like to note in 17B, we have a typo, which is my responsibility. The public hearing noted, the Vina hearing in 17B, while it's being introduced today, it is going to be held on February 23rd. And it looks like that change did get into your package. All the documents that pertain to that are the correct dates, so I just wanted to note that. We are starting discussion of a process tonight that will actually extend through April 28th. We've already discussed and applied for, if you recall, at the last board meeting, a special loan program where we could get relief on interest alone. But that just triggers the rest of the process where we need two resolutions, a public hearing, and so on. And Noble, the managing director of Stifel Nicolaus, is here with us this evening to walk through the calendar that we have put together, and also to present some, I think, very insightful comparisons on just how favorable this financing approach will be for us. So if I could, I'll turn it over to Ann.
All right, let's see here, is this already on? Okay. All right, well, thanks for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to be here, as always. You're really potentially venturing into a pretty unique and wonderful opportunity. Your approval last month of the qualified school construction bond application is a very unique opportunity, which represents tremendous potential interest cost savings to the district. As you know, that application was due last month, and we are currently awaiting results from the Illinois State Board of Education. We are told we should hear news on February 10th. I'm not certain that will end up being reality, and we may get pushed off until March, because they did receive close to 200 applications. So they have quite a pile of information they're trying to weed through. But they have not officially stated yet that they're diverting from their original schedule. So right now, we're proceeding based on knowing the results on February 10th. So what I provided for you on this first slide is simply just a comparison of traditional bonds versus the qualified school construction bonds. And let's just start with saying, all of these bonds, whether they're qualified school construction bonds or not, are all a type of bond called an alternate revenue bond. These are different from what you've been selling over the last three and a half years. The last several series of bonds have all been voted bonds or health life safety bonds, and they're all paid from the district's property tax levy, your bond and interest levy. These bonds are called alternate revenue bonds, and they're called that because they're repaid from an alternate revenue source. In this case, the alternate revenue source is the district's corporate personal property tax receipts. You had historically a bond issue outstanding repaid from CPPRT. Those bonds were paid off several years ago. We are reinstituting that commitment of CPPRT to the amount of $3 million a year for these bonds, which is identical to the amount you were obligating on your prior bonds. What you've been doing since the prior alternate revenue bonds were paid off was siphoning off that $3 million toward capital projects. So the same $3 million will now just go toward the repayment of these bonds. The alternate revenue bonds were all along part of the capital financing plan that we've all been talking about for five years. The original plan was that we would finance about $25 million worth of projects with alternate revenue bonds in 2018 for a 10-year period. And basically, we were just going to use $3 million a year for 10 years and get you the maximum project dollars that we could at that time. Okay? And that first column represents that. It produced about $25.4 million worth of project funds. And again, it wasn't going to be sold until 2018. So that first column really represents the plan we were looking at way back when. The next three scenarios look at accelerating the sale of the alternate revenue bonds into 2016. They all assume a May 2016 sale date. The second option is a non-qualified school construction bond option. This is a standard alternate revenue bond. As you know, the primary benefit of the qualified school construction bonds is tremendous interest cost savings. Essentially, those bonds come in at zero interest cost likely. We obviously don't know that until we have investors lined up to buy them, other than the fact, right now, the qualified school construction bonds are subject to federal sequestration. So you're not getting your full interest subsidy back from the federal government on qualified school construction bonds. So all of my scenarios, the two scenarios I show here for qualified school construction bonds, have a little bit of interest expense associated with them, and that's why. Okay? But the second scenario is what alternate revenue bonds would look like as non-qualified school construction bonds. So you're borrowing about $28 million of project funds in the first line, and the last row represents total principal plus interest, total debt service. So total principal plus interest is $33.5 million to get $28 million. The next two scenarios just show you that the third scenario is for the same $33.6 million, the same outlay of cash, how much could you borrow in qualified school construction bonds? The answer to that is $32.86 million, okay, because they're almost interest-free. But your project application for the qualified school construction bonds was $28.6 million, and that's the last column there. So you can borrow the $28.6 million of qualified school construction bonds, and basically, we get to shorten them up by two years. Let's see, does this pointer actually work? There we go. See right here, we're at 11 and a half year payback on all three of these options. Well, this one's actually 11. 11 and a half, and 11 and a half. This one goes to nine and a half. We knocked off two years of repayment just by the interest cost savings, essentially. Okay? So we're still using the same $3 million of annual expenditures, but instead of spending $33.6 million, we're spending 29 and a quarter, and we're paying them off two years earlier. The other option, and you guys can decide this later, it's not a decision you have to make tonight, we could still extend these out the 11 and a half years and just not use $3 million a year. So you'd have a little bit extra leftover for pay-as-you-go projects if you wanted to. Okay? So the point of this slide is just to demonstrate, as if it wasn't clear enough, that interest-free bonds are good, right? Okay? So that's, we are desperately hoping that the state awards your application. The next page is a timeline, and it gets at the action items on your agenda. Alternate revenue bonds, as I indicated, are different than what you've sold over the past few years, so they do require some additional steps. Alternate revenue bonds are secured first and foremost by that alternate revenue source, the CPPRT. But they also, they are, they're known as what we call a double barrel bond. They have a double security pledge on them. The first security pledge is the CPPRT. The backup security pledge is a property tax levy. So were the district to ever have CPPRT eliminated from your budget, it is a first-budget obligation of your CPPRT. Okay? So as long as you're getting CPPRT, that's what you're going to have to use it for first, is to make that bond payment. And this $3 million bond payment is well below your full annual CPPRT payment. But were you to ever not receive CPPRT, you would have the legal right to levy property taxes to make this bond payment, if you needed to. You wouldn't be obligated to levy for it. You, the board, could say, okay, we didn't get CPPRT, we're going to use O and M funds instead, or whatever you, whatever you wanted to designate, okay? But because it has this double-barrel security pledge to it, alternate revenue bonds of any type require a 30-day public referendum period. So one of the items for your review tonight is the resolution of intent to issue up to $29.1 million of alternate revenue bonds. What the resolution of intent does is exactly what it says. It states your intent to issue up to $29.1 million of alternate revenue bonds. After you approve that resolution, then a notice will get published in the paper that says exactly that. The district intends to sell $29.1 million of alternate revenue bonds. And then the public has 30 days to sign a petition if they so desire to ask you not to sell those bonds without voter approval. That's what the petition period represents. Okay? And it takes 7.5% of the registered voters to sign such a petition. So you'll see on the timeline here, we have first reading tonight, approval on February 9th, we hope to hear from ISBE on February 10th or before, and then we'll publish the notice in the paper right after that. This resolution is good whether you get your QSCB allocation or not, because you can sell non-qualified school construction bond, alternate revenue bonds. Either way, you can still sell the same alternate revenue bonds. The question is, what's the interest cost associated with those bonds? Okay? So the resolution applies regardless. We start your petition period on the 11th of February, and then, as Marty indicated, on February 23rd, we'll hold a public hearing, which is required, of any non-voted bond. It's simply just a public hearing for the public to make comment regarding the sale of the bonds. And then after that, we move into March, which is just full-on bond document preparation. We'll have to go back through the bond rating process and get ready to sell bonds. Qualified school construction bonds have not been seen in the marketplace for a very long time. As you all heard when you approved the application, the program was created in 2009, and almost every other state in the Union used their allocation in 2009. Illinois has to be special, so we're using ours in 2016. So the market hasn't seen a qualified school construction bond in a long time, and they've never been sold in Illinois. So there will be basically legal documents created from scratch for this program. So it's going to take just a little bit longer if we do get the QSCB allocation to get the legal documents prepared. So I've baked that into this timeline. All of this will result in bond proceeds buyer before May 1 that you can use toward your projects this summer. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
If I could just add one important comment about the timing on this calendar. We were very careful to have the resolution of intent to go forward after the second reading. But we fully expect to know the status of our QSCB allocation before we would ever get to a resolution for sale of bonds. That way, you can make that decision, should we not get the QSCB approval, whether you want to go ahead or not, without any difficulty.
That's correct. And even if we, you approve the resolution and we go through that public notice period, it's good for three years once we get through that phase. So even if you, for some reason, decided you wanted to pause on the bonds because you didn't get a QSCB allocation, and you just wanted to do it in 2017 instead, you would have this legal step out of the way, and you wouldn't have to repeat it again.
Mr. Rollins?
And so if I understand you correctly, really, the two columns we should focus on are column two and column four, because those are the two options. It's going to be between one of those two.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I think I'm understanding now, so the final decision on what we want to do in column four, whether we extend that out to 11 and a half years and maybe have a little extra money every year, or whether we try to pay off the bonds earlier, we would do that when we do the resolution to sell the bonds, is that?
That's correct.
And so we would have to know that, looking at your timeline, well, sometime in late March, I would guess?
Yeah, for that first reading on March 22nd, we would need to have that figured out.
Okay.
We can obviously slow this timeline down, too, if you decided you didn't need money by May 1. It's easily slowed down.
Ms. McCullough?
So both of those columns are $28 million.
That's correct.
Project fund. And you keep speaking about 29 plus.
Yeah.
So what is that number?
Your qualified school construction bond application is for $29.1 million, which is the $28,611. Whoops, let's go back here. It's this number, that's the total of your projects, plus costs associated with the bond issue, which you had to set a cap on in your application. And in your application, the maximum, the cap that's allowed legally is 2%. You used 1.6%. 1.6% of $28.6 million takes you to your $29.1. You won't, your costs won't be that high. You'll see out here, I used 1.2. So my numbers are a little lower than the $29.1 million. But you will have legal authority to sell up to $29.1 million of qualified school construction bonds if the state approves your application.
Okay.
One more question.
Mr. Rollins?
Well, something you said just sort of triggered your question that I hadn't thought about before. You talked about slowing it down if we didn't need the money. Is this money subject to those same restrictions that the general obligation bonds are on, so we have to spend it within a certain period of time?
Yes.
Well, that's a question, I guess, for the administration. So none of this is for the new construction. I don't know who I'm asking this question of.
Mr. Schmidt?
Todd.
Todd, Mr. Schmidt. So are we actually, if we sell these bonds on this schedule, are we scheduled to actually spend this money within the period of time required by law?
Yes, everything on that list that we have for that $28 million, we'll have that under construction and done within three years from when we sell the bond.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Harner?
Is there anything unique, or is there anything, I guess, I don't know, distinctive, anything that was included in our application for the qualified school construction bonds that would give any indication as to ours being chosen versus others? I mean, is there any, the nature of what we applied for, or something to give some guidance, is, or?
The applications, at least the original parameters, don't give any preferential treatment based on projects. It does give preferential treatment based on a certain level of wealth indices, age of buildings, you know, all sorts of ratios, very similar to the ratios that the state used last year when they distributed that extra GSA. In fact, it's identical to those indices, other than the fact they've added some weighting for. for age of buildings and, and I think per students, number of students in a building, per pupil buildings, I don't know how to say what I'm trying to get at, but anyway. Otherwise, the sort of wealth indices, free and reduced lunch counts, all of that that were used to distribute GSA last year are all part of the weighting. So what they're doing is just gleaning, basically, do you have shovel-ready projects, which you do, by their definition? And then they use those indices that I just measured. And they're literally just ranking districts based on that criteria. They have about half a billion dollars worth of allocations to give. They're going to start at the top of the list and when they get to half a billion, they're done.
So they wouldn't say, we want to give more districts lesser money?
If they did.
Whatever, whatever those, I mean, whatever everybody asks for, they're going to get until they run out, not they're going to decide to give us only 20.
Right. Based on their original parameters approved by the state board, they're not going to fund partial allocations. Either you're in or you're out, unless you're the last district. If you're the last one to get filled, you might only get partially filled. They may change the criteria and say, based on our original criteria, we're only going to get to fill 22 districts and we have 192 applications, or whatever they ended up getting. And the state board's not comfortable with leaving that many unfilled and maybe they'll start prorating. But that will require additional action by the state board.
So the criteria kind of is hinting at need.
It is, yes. Yeah, they're trying, they're trying to get at, obviously, the districts with the greatest need, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Anne? Dr. Jarrett?
I would just also point out that Chicago is not among the districts being considered because they received their money from this fund six or seven years ago already.
They got it in '09 directly, so they already sold their bonds.
Okay.
So that is correct.
Okay.
And the maximum allocation any district can receive is 50 million, so.
Okay.
All right. This will be presented at our February 9th meeting for a vote.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments or agenda items under new business? I would just remind the board that we, on February 2nd at 7:00 PM in this room, we will be doing the interviews of the six applicants that we have for the vacant board position. That will be following the Operations Committee meeting. If there are no other agenda items, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Moved by Mr. Rollins.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Pose the same sign, we are adjourned at 7:52 PM.
Okay. I kind of figured you did.